Okay, so at this time, if you'd stand at home and we'll stand here and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is election of officers for the chairman and vice president, not vice chairman. So at this point in time, I mean, I'll be glad to run again if you want me and if somebody else wants to chime in there.
So moved, I move we, point John.
I second. All right, do we want to do a vote, a roll call?
Sure.
This is for...
The vice chairman.
Oh, you want to do them both together? Or we could do them together. So do you want to, nominations for vice chairman?
Yes.
I nominate Ken Hartsfield as vice chairman.
Second.
Okay, shall we do a vote on both John for chairman and Ken for vice chairman? We'll begin with Eric Disman.
I vote yes.
Ken Hartsfield?
Yes.
Al Bungy?
Yes.
Vicky Good? Vicky?
Yes.
Ellen Carrick?
Yes.
Larry Larson?
Yes.
Lee Brown?
Yes.
John DeVoe?
Yes.
Congratulations, John, you're chairman yet again. And Ken, congratulations.
So, thank you. This is my 20th year since I started with the city in 2001 on the DDA, and that has been a long road, a long road, but that's okay. You look back 50 years and you say, I'm really getting older. Public hearings, okay? I'll read this.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, you might want to approve the minutes first.
We got a minutes. Anybody want any, shall we look at any changes, corrections, Lee, sorry? Any, any changes to the minutes? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I moved the minutes, the minutes be approved as submitted last week in the package.
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll start with Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Al Bungy?
Yes.
Vicky Good?
Yes.
Ellen Carrick?
Yes.
Larry Larson?
Yes.
Lee Brown?
Yes.
John DeVoe?
Yes.
Eric Disman?
Yes.
Minutes are approved, Mr. Chairman.
One of the things that we probably should do, guys, is that says, because we can't see you and we don't know who's speaking, say your name when you do it, so we, so we got that for the record. Because otherwise, we're just hearing the audio on that. It'll give us a better record for that. Okay, public hearing, hearings, item A. The conditional use permit 2021-01/site plan review 2021-01 extension of the Woodland Park self-storage conditional use permit and site plan review. A request by MXM3XP2LLC applicant and 19350 Group LLC property owner for a two-year extension of the conditional use permit and the site plan review. Okay, approval, conditional use permits 18-01, site plan review 18-01 and ordinance 1330 2018 for a 72,400 square foot storage facility proposed on 4.75 acres, described as lot one, Woodland Park Saddle Club filing number one, 19350 East US Highway 24 in the service commercial zone. And this, this is quasi judicial, public, city council, public hearing, 7:00 PM, March 4. And at this point, I think Laura, you wanted to, your turn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a very brief presentation. First, I'd like to say that...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt.
Uh huh. Hi, Ken.
Hi. I think it's prudent that I recuse myself from this hearing. I was involved in the initial stages of the design for this project, and I recused myself last time we heard that. So I am finding out for now. Thank you.
Anybody having any objections to him recusing himself? Okay, none, none. I didn't hear anybody, so it's good.
John, this is Lee Brown. I, I have a concern regarding this matter, doesn't, which I think might be sensible to address before Laura reviews the details of, of the application. This was a matter, this was a matter which was approved two and a half, two and a half years ago. I, I don't propose to, you know, object substantively to what they're doing. If the new app, if a matter were brought forth and a new, again, now as a new, as an initial request, I think we'd probably look at it the same way as we did the first time. But my concern is with the appropriateness of extending an expired site plan review and conditional use permit. There's both, the concern I was first, just on, on general principles, usually something that's extended is not as, it shouldn't, doesn't expire. It's prior to expiration. When it extends it, when it's already expired, or in ordinary matters, it's too late to extend it. The language of the ordinance seems to be consistent with that interpretation, and I'm referring to 18.34.110 expiration, which it's no fun reading. They, it's a couple, several sentences long. I don't know how many people have access to it in hand. But it starts out, after authority for issuance of an application and site plan review has expired by default, no zoning development permit or building permit shall be issued except under new application and site plan review. Remain or, the remaining portion then explains how, explains that the authority to issue ZDP or building permit expires in two years unless an extension has been granted by the planning commission. All of which, my mind says that this would have been fine last July, but it's just not something we can do now, and to extend something that's expired really doesn't, is not, is not effective. I, I'd raise, I raise this with Sally. I, I think, I think our city attorney was here and perhaps in part to address this question. At least, so it, it seems to me, this is just not, this is not ripe for us to consider an, an extension, but we should be handling a new request.
Is that, is, are you complete?
Yes, that's...
Okay, I understand, I think we all understand it. Now, I believe our legal counsel is present in this meeting, and I don't know if she's had a chance to review that, but if you'd like to comment on that, we'd more than welcome that.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add something before, we have a comment from Ms. Nina Williams, who is our city attorney, and she is on, online here. So, we did accept the application for the extension. They submitted their application on 1/29/21. They were aware that it expired July 19, 2020. It has no substantive changes. As a matter of fact, all we're extending, and this decision today is just to extend the already approved conditional use permit and site plan review. There are no changes to anything, no changes to the site plan, no changes to the proposed development, no changes to the conditions, no changes to the ordinance. Because there are no changes, staff felt comfortable bringing forward the item for consideration for extension. The only, they have already submitted their zoning permits for the construction drawings, for grading, for drainage, for the site work. They've already submitted those, and those have been in review and re-review and gone through numerous iterations based on changes that they've made and that we've recommended. But we were unable to come to a point where we could approve it, approve the ZDP. So they couldn't go beyond that. So, because they were in a ZDP review process, we felt comfortable submitting this expiration for an extension, plus they submitted a resubmital, their final resubmital hopefully, in January. So we now have updated documents to look at again, and we would just base these on the approved site plan and conditional use permit. And the conditions still stand, and the site plan still stands, and we would still just continue on with the review that we are currently in process right now. So that's kind of where staff is coming from in terms of, sure, it's expired, but nothing has changed. And it would be onerous to make the applicant go through the whole entire process again when nothing has changed in the site plan and the application, and circumstances, the regulations haven't changed, circumstances haven't changed, except maybe COVID has slowed it down a little bit. So that's where staff was coming from.
I would like to hear the comments from our legal.
Yes, so Nina, if you want to add anything?
Sure, thanks, everyone. Yeah, Laura had reached out to me yesterday on this, and I see that if, you know, what we're, you're here to determine, I mean, it's not an ideal situation, definitely. It's an awkward one. It's, I liken it to something, you know, when someone's asking for approval of something when there, it's already happened, but we, as the planning commission, you still need to look at, or the city council, still need to look at the code and objectively apply the standards. So we're here to, you're here to approve whether or not you're going to extend this permit and the site plan review, and the applications for, if you do choose to approve the two-year extension, it would be from the two years, you know, July 2022. It's not from today, it's from that, that two-year period. So in, in this situation, just again, not an ideal situation, but I see that if it's expired unless you have given, unless you're giving an extension, you have the, I, I think this application has the ability to move forward and you to determine whether that or not that is the case. And in doing so, really, it's, it's more about looking at the substance, like you said, the substance of the application. If we don't have an objection to that, look at it as if, you know, you're making the decision, determination, it's here in front, before you tonight, to determine whether or not you grant that extension. In, in weighing, I guess, the two options, it makes sense for this to move forward as a presentation for you, and then up to you as planning commission, whether you grant that extension.
Thank you. At this point in time, we've gone through the planning commission, the staff's presentation. Do you folks have anything that you would like to get up and address us about?
So, Mr. Chairman, I did not get a chance to do my presentation. I was going to go through the presentation, no, I was just talking in response to Commissioner Brown's comment.
Oh, okay.
I would, I was going to go through the presentation as it was presented in 2018 to show, first of all, the new commissioners, what was approved, and second of all, to show how nothing has changed in terms of the application and the approval and the ordinance and the regulations.
Will the rest of the commission be seeing this?
Yes, they'll agree.
Will that be on for the folks that are, that are remote? Yeah, okay.
You know what, this is Vicky. I've got a concern, though. Aren't we overriding the city charter if we're making the exception to go, you know, six months past that extension deadline? Aren't we making an exception? Aren't we overriding the city charter? Do we have the right to do that?
So it's a municipal code regulation, and pursuant to Ms. Williams' comments, yes, it's up to the planning commission. If you feel that you want to consider this application for an extension, it's within your discretion.
Do you concur, Ms. Williams?
This is for you to consider. I think it should be in front of you to consider. If, if some of you have concerns that you are not going to grant it, then that makes sense, but we should move forward with the application and the hearing, and you have the right to consider whether or not to extend, excuse me, extend it, extends, extend this.
Thank you. Vicky, anything else you'd like to follow up with?
It just worries me that it puts us in legal bind as far as later on, somebody else is going to come back three years later and say, well, you know, I want it, we haven't done any changes, and we want it to have another extension. I think that the two-year period in there is, I mean, is in there for a reason. It's a requirement.
Yeah.
Have any, anybody else right now that's passed their extension that is talking to the city?
Well, we've extended numerous times the Paradise master plan. I think, boy, it's been more than 15 years that we've extended and extended and extended that master plan, and essentially the same design still holds today. And I would argue that this site plan and these conditional use permit requirements still hold even though it's been six months since it expired. Typically, Vicky, the two-year limit is in case things change in terms of new regulations, and that kind of saves us if we have a new regulation, let's say, a new height limitation that would then change this whole application. But that has not happened. In this last two years, nothing has changed in terms of the regulations that would have any impact on this application.
So did the Paradise properties, did they, every two years before?
They have, and...
Planning?
Yes, they've come before the planning commission.
Every two years, correct? So they met the deadline. They always met the deadline, correct?
That was my point. Those were not extensions after expiration. Those, each cases, at least the last one certainly, I know, was done prior to the master plan, the previous approval expired.
So if I could just clarify, I'm not telling, you know, Laura's presenting something as staff recommendation. I'm not telling you whether or not to approve or approve this. All I'm saying is that I, I think in weighing everything, that this should go forward for your consideration, that the hearing should occur, and then you can determine whether or not you're going to grant the extension. So that's, I just want to make the procedural clarification.
I have a question whether there were mitigating circumstances as to why, you know, this wasn't presented last July. This is Ellen.
Hi, Ellen. So we only got the application in January of this year. We did notify the applicant that it was going to expire, and then it did expire. And while that was happening, of course, COVID was happening as well, and they were in the midst of doing revisions. We had already given them some suggested revisions to their construction drawings, and they were doing those revisions, but they just didn't get them in time, and...
They dismissed it.
They missed, they missed the deadline, but they're still, they were working on it.
I have learned over the last 20 years that if the council for the city says, I'll defend it, and it's okay to go forward, I'm thinking of Aaron Smith, fine, but if they say, don't do it, and you defend it, you're on your own, or you'd have to. So I've learned to trust the legal opinion of the people that we're having represent us as, as, as a line to follow for all of us.
And they, and the, like, again, the here, the hearing should move forward, and then you guys can determine after hearing all the, of this evidence, you know, like you always do, the staff report, then applicant speaks, and you deliberate. So we just want to make sure that the hearing occurs, and then you can make that decision. So that's, that's what I'm saying, that we should move forward with, with hearing whether or not you're going to grant the, the extension for the site plan and the conditional use permit.
One question I have, though, is during for the public notice for this project that was going to be coming up, as far as the extension on this particular project, on the public notice, did it state on there that it was past the extension period so that the public knew? Or was that not published, that for six months past that date for a general, normal extension? Because I think the public needs to be, should have been notified that this wasn't just a normal extension process, that this was actually six months past the normal two-year period? And was the public notified?
So we did a public notice like we typically do. We did a notice in the newspaper for tonight's meeting, and that was simply the agenda posting. And the agenda posting does not state that it expired, but it does state that it was a two-year extension, and I'm just looking at it right now. A two-year extension of the CUP and SPR approval for the facility. So it did not state that it was expired, and then the posters that we put on site do not state that it was expired, but it does state that it's a request for a two-year extension of an approved site plan. And then the adjacent property owner letters also, same thing. It did not state that it was expired, but it did state that it was for a two-year extension of an approved site plan and conditional use.
Understand, folks, this still has to go to city council, and we're just a recommending body at this point. So this whole thing will sure, surely come to light again. I believe it's on March the 4th, okay?
This is Larry, and that's a very good point, John, to have to review this. We make a decision to recommend that it be extended. We should also, at the same time, part of that motion, notify the city council that this permit has expired in, contrary to our code.
Kelly Brown, can I make an observation on this last point, which John raised? It is, it's kind of interesting, this 1834.110. Ordinarily, except in the flood permit area, generally, we're an advisory body. The way, the way the ex, the way the, this, the language is worded, is the expiration, an extension, if it's timely granted, is done by the planning commission, and that's for the site plan review. The this conditional use permit in extension is granted by the city council. So it is kind of odd. It's like, it would appear that only the conditional use permit would go to the city council to be considered, but this, but the planning commission alone reviews, reviews extensions of site plan reviews, they say that if not, you know, that if not expired. He's, so it's, it's a usually we, our advisory only, but apparently, here, we're not. We make a final decision on the site plan review.
Sally, would you like to make a comment on this?
Commissioner Brown does point out an inconsistency in the review, reviewing bodies. That's something that we hope to fix in the future, but I would also point out that the applicant, the property owner, has a right, a due process right to be heard, and so if you will all keep an open mind and hear the public hearing, as our attorney has recommended, we should move forward with the hearing as posted, as required, and then have deliberations after the presentations.
Thank you, Sally. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, the conditional use permit process allows for the combination of the CUP and the SPR, which then both go forward to council. So if, if you read into the conditional use permit process, and that's how this was processed, combined as one application with the planning commission being the recommending body for both the site plan and the conditional use permit, and then council being the final authority. So there may be some interpretation on the expiration also having that combined approach.
Well, and the, and the, and the legal folks that represent us will be at that meeting as well and advise the council as well as they advise us.
Yes.
So at that point, does anybody else on the commission have any more questions for either the applicant or staff at this point? If that, if none, what we'll do, we'll now open the public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that has signed up to be on this?
So, Mr. Chairman, did you want me to go through my presentation or not?
Oh.
I still haven't, I still haven't done my presentation.
You want it so bad. You gotta do that.
I prepared.
And I would like to see it, because it's new to me.
Right, for the benefit of the new members. Okay, and I promise I will go quickly. So this, again, is the Woodland Park self-storage facility. It was a conditional use permit and site plan review combined in one ordinance, and it did, it was for a mini storage warehouse for personal property for a 72,400 square foot storage facility on 5.25 acres on what was, at that time, in 2018, unplatted land, but has been subsequently platted into a formalized plat and lot with an address of 19, I think it's 350 now instead of 250, in the service commercial zone district. So the, the zone district has not changed, and the general use and intent of this application has not changed either. So council did approve the ordinance for the conditional use permit and site plan on January 19, 2018, and the planning commission approved, recommended approval on May 24, 2018. So the site is down here where the star is, on the south end of Highway 24, south of, right opposite of Trall Road. That's Trall Road that you see on the east side of Highway 24. So the site itself is in red here, and you can see the Woodland Park Lift Station is here. This used to be the old Saddle Club site. Fountain Creek is here immediately to the east, and then further to the east is Teller County. You can see that the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park is, is still there and is to the south. To the east is the Swiss Chalet, the Elk Grove Town Homes. Here is Trall Road. This is the U-Haul facility that the planning commission, I think it was in October of last year, extended, changed the ordinance to extend that U-Haul facility because they were looking to use their parking facility in the front of this U-Haul storage site to do the lay-down yard for the water bore that's going to go under the highway and then end up connecting over to this facility. So that was extended in, in October, till I think the end of June. So that is the site map, and you can see here is the service commercial zone district. None of these zone districts have changed. This is the site, and it pretty much looks the same way today with no changes. This was an aerial showing you some of the nearest buildings and structures, and again, nothing has changed. So the closest building is about 167 feet to, on the south side, to the nearest mobile home in the Mobile Home Park, and then 85 feet to the city facility. So that gives you an idea. This was their site plan showing the layout. You can see that there were a few buildings this was going to be, is going to be perhaps a climate controlled, controlled storage facility here as you come in off of Trall Road, and you come into the first building. They were proposing RV storage, a, a big building that went along the creek here, some self-storage, not climate-controlled here, and further south here. So none of that has changed. They're working through all of their grading and erosion and site work for this. This is just a image showing the footprint and the contours of the area. This is an image showing where their proposed lighting, which was all downcast and shielded, is going to go on these buildings and on the site. This is some of their landscaping that they were proposing, and some of the signage that they were proposing, none of which has changed. This is the concept of what the elevations might look like. This is the climate-controlled building, so it shows you some varied roof lines and, and different materials and facade exteriors, and then these are the self-storage units that are the, further south of the climate-controlled building. So we did a complete review and analysis in 2018. There was a referral, we did public notices, we analyzed it with the permitted uses and the conditional uses. So the warehouse and mini storage is a conditional use permit, which is what was approved. And in the service commercial zone district, there's a height limitation of 35 feet. All of the frontage, the parking, the fencing, the signs, the sidewalk, the landscaping, all of that, none of that has changed. All of those regulations remain as they were when this was approved. We looked at the conditional use standards with respect to the need of this use. We looked at the conditional use standards with respect to the need of this use, the public health, safety and welfare, the property values, whether or not it harmonized with the surrounding area and was in compliance and conformance with the city plans and city regulations. Whether the traffic had any impact, drainage, water sewer, wastewater hazards to the area and architectural design. And again, everything that was approved in 2018 would still stand today. There is no changes. They're not looking at increased traffic. There's no additional drainage. They're working through the engineering drawings for the drainage, but there's no changes to it that would have an impact on this proposal. No additional hazards have materialized. The architectural design was fine in 2018 and the standards haven't changed since then. The site plan review standards, again, it's a site plan review, which is conceptual of the of the proposed development. We reviewed those drawings with the city plans, our city regulations for grading, erosion, design, parking, all of those requirements preliminarily with the site plan. We looked at the traffic, the soils, the drainage, the the site features, water sewer, wastewater, air quality, fire, safety hazards and the compatibility. And again, in 2018, we found that it was approvable and nothing has changed. They're just working through their engineering and their construction drawings. So the recommendation in 2018 was to approve ordinance 1330. Ordinance 1330 contained all of the conditional use conditions and approved the site plan, which showed the the conceptual layout of the buildings on the site. So it approved the use for mini storage warehouse, commercial warehouse and storage, and for professional business office and storage warehouse at this site. Now, the ordinance did have conditions. The ordinance was attached to the package. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to go through these conditions, but all of these conditions still stand, except that the applicant did do his final plat according to item D of this. Prior to issuance of a building permit for any building, a final plat must be approved by the city. They did plat this. So they were working on this and they did the final plat for this lot first, which made total sense. And then they started doing their construction and engineering drawings. So, you know, there's been a lot of time that has passed, but they have been working on it. And and this is just simply an extension of an approval that that went through the entire process and nothing has changed. So those are all the conditions. They still stand. We would still review the zoning permit that they're applying for with all of these conditions. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend to city council the approval of this extension of the conditional use permit, which is in ordinance 1330 and site plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, now we'll get back to opening public comment. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak about this that are?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you might want to let the applicant speak first if they have anything that they want to say. Usually they speak after the
How do we get down this far?
Staff.
You wanted to get that in. You have anything you'd like to add? Either you guys?
At the podium, and you might have to turn the mic on.
Michael Harper, M3XP2 member, as well as 19350 group LLC member. We appreciate you considering our extension this evening and as well as everything that has been presented to this point. I think the only other pertinent item that we would present is that we are in finance application, have been in finance application since we applied for the project. But as you know, the last year has been contentious and hasn't exactly been friendly to deal with the banking community. So in the past year, our application for finance has been considered by two banks. The first bank led us through the process and then they had a change in their staffing. And the person that received our application and processed it, presented it to their board, left the bank last year. And as we found out, as we went through the process, the banking industry all but came to a halt. It's not that they weren't granting loans and it's not that they weren't considering loans, but the process that they go through has to involve a lot of staff and meetings and everything that generally would would require face to face and a certain amount of interaction. So we are back with a another lender. The prospects look very good in this application. And we think along with our application, we'll be able to fulfill our timetable and bring the construction to fruition.
Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I do. I couldn't see it on the plat. If is there acceleration and deceleration lanes coming in and out since people are already coming in and out with campers, which are going to decelerate slow and accelerate slow?
You know, I'm going to let Mark address that.
Mark Weaver, member of M3XP2, 19350. Can y'all hear me okay in this?
Yep.
Laura, I don't know if you can put up that aerial, but if you're going westbound on 24, there is a decel lane to cross on Trall. And then I think, that's a great question. I believe there is a right turn lane for eastbound traffic onto this site. But we've made a an application for a CDOT permit and we've obtained that. We've
Okay.
If I could just interject that this site has required a fair amount of engineering and utility work. And it just takes time. It's we've been working with Matrix and Colleen, who's on this call for months trying to get these things. We've worked closely with staff to get things determined and set and with CDOT. So you could decel when you're going westbound, you can decel right there and turn across Trall right there. And then I just can't quite tell if there's a dedicated decel lane if you're going eastbound.
Looks like there is.
It looks like.
And I can't quite tell.
But there wasn't there wasn't any request for any extra CDOT requirements regarding access or excel or decel.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Did you want Colleen to speak?
Yeah, Colleen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, but yeah, we did do a traffic study. It was required and it went to also Woodland Parks, the city of Woodland Park, and also to CDOT. And CDOT did not recommend any improvements were necessary for the project. So they did, you know, accept our traffic study and analysis and and we just need to get an access permit from them still. But that is not contingent upon deceleration lanes or anything like that. It's just to be able to construct the entrance there.
Colleen, have you submitted for the CDOT access permit?
We did submit it and we're on hold because they do need the construction, maintenance and protection of traffic to be submitted by the contractor who's going to be selected to do that work and also the insurance from from the contractor. So but as far as our design goes, everything is approved, but we just need to submit that information to them. But we we were not at that point yet.
And have you submitted the water bore under Highway 24 to CDOT yet?
That's the same situation where they need the insurance from the contractor and also the maintenance protection of traffic plans.
Okay.
So once, once, you know, the applicant or the client can, you know, get those people under contract or, you know, initiate that, then we can submit that the rest of the permit.
Thank you.
Anything else that you'd like to present? Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, this is Larry, and I have a question for the applicant. Were you aware that the your permit and site plan expired last summer?
Yes, sir. We we if we could say that there was a lot going on with COVID and we were working with Matrix to try to sort out all these engineering issues. And we were advised that our our application had expired.
Okay, thank you.
Got on it as soon there were. So to continue the application and the extension, there were other engineering issues that we needed to address as well. So that's what we did over those months, trying to complete all of that so we could bring what we brought in January.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And we had nobody. Okay, we had anybody on public comment, guys? Anybody?
So there's no members of the public here tonight, but we do have some attendees and I see one. Hang on, I gotta figure this out.
Hi, Laura.
Laura Catherine Nakai had her hand raised. I believe she'd like to speak.
All right, Catherine Nakai, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ms. Catherine Nakai, 225 Morning Star Court, Woodland Park. I just had a couple of questions and a comment. So it appears that nothing's changed in the applicat- or in the original CUP. So I just wanted to clarify. Are you still planning to do 30 U-Hauls instead of the original 10 that you guys had asked from commission two years ago? And the other question would be, is the RV storage still covered? Hey, Mark.
Hey there. Yes, it's still covered. What was your first question? Is there going to be 10 U-Haul units or 30? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah. So when you when you all presented two years ago to commission, you had or Eric Smith had stated that you would do 10 rentals of U-Hauls, but when you went to council, you upped it to 30. So I'm just trying to figure out which way it was going to go.
Yeah, and and I'm going to give you the I'm not sure about that.
Okay. So I'm guessing it's 30.
No, the site plan was only showing for about 10 units, less than 10 units in that little parking space that they had planned in the front, so that it was never going to allow for 30, not big enough in their design to allow for 30. Now, the conditional use does allow for up to 30, but their site plan never showed that much space.
Okay, so then the site plan is still for the 10?
Yes, or less than 10, I think.
Yeah, I think it was technically seven, but if I remember correctly.
Yeah, they said seven. They show seven on their site plan.
Catherine, John Devoe, the council can change it.
I know they can, but if they if their site review plan only has room for seven for now, they're only going to build seven. And then they they'll have to do phase two maybe to get the other 13 in there or 23 in there.
Weren't those going to be out in front of that that multi that big temperature controlled building?
About is out in front of the building.
Yep.
Rob, can you throw up the site plan again? Right here. Do you see where it says seven?
Anything blown up bigger than that we can see? It's hard to see. There you go.
Do you see where it says seven?
Yeah, I've got Trall.
That's the primary U-Haul truck and parking area. And so they were only proposing seven.
Okay.
So at least seven for phase one?
Yes, according to their site plan.
Okay, so so basically then it's still at seven to 10 for the moment, and they can still go up to 30 later.
Yes.
Okay. So then my next question was, so the if I understand correctly, the boring actually occurs from the other U-Haul site to get water to this site? Is that correct?
Yeah, let me. It will go from here's the U-Haul site across the highway. It'll come across under the highway, come through here and then come down. And this is where the climate control facility will be. And that's primarily the path it'll follow.
Okay, so are we going to have to keep going back and forth with extensions from this side to that side, back to this side? Because they have to fix the parking lot on the other side and they don't want to do that until we get the right?
Yeah, so the extension for the U-Haul on Trall Road right here was it gave them up until June 30, 2021 to do existing parking lot repairs, repair the asphalt surface, the potholes, restripe the parking spaces. So they have till June 30.
Okay.
If they don't get it done by June 30, and we have finally received the application for the bore, for the water bore under the highway, and we're reviewing that right now, they would have to go for another extension to extend it from June 30 to something else.
Yeah. So is there some precedent for how many times you can extend the project? Because they've already extended the boring twice, right?
There's no limit.
Okay, all right. I just, you know, I just don't want to extend this and then they have to go do something else and this has to continually get extended. If that makes sense.
Yep.
Because they're kind of tied together.
They are very much tied together.
Okay. And then so my last, my last one is actually just a comment. And it goes back to whatever everybody else, Vicki, Lee, Larry. I get that 2020 was a crappy year. But they knew that the extension was going to be required and you're setting a precedent that it's okay to not to not extend or to not file the extension before it expires. So that's just my two cents on that comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Catherine, did we answer your question about the the RV?
Yeah, Mark did say it would be covered. So there's still, there's I'm assuming there's still going to be building covered, not like tarp covered. Right?
Right, yes.
Okay, that was it.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any other members that have their hand up to speak. So if anyone that is on Zoom would like to speak, please put your hand up now.
If that's the case, we will close the public comment at this point. And do you and there's a the next opportunity would be any rebuttal if you chose to do so from the applicant. Okay. Not seeing any of that. Then we'll go on to commissioners get to ask the final questions. Okay? Anybody got their hand up for final questions?
So planning commissioners, you don't need to put your hand up. You can just speak.
If I want to address the code, shall I do that later? The code, 1834110.
Now would be the time.
All right. So as I read this, what this is talking about is really an issuance of zoning development permit or building permit, not the site plan review. So as I see 1834110, there is no issue with us extending this, the site plan review and the CUP. This is only referring to no zoning development permit or building permit shall be issued. So as long as we extend this, we're good. There's nothing in here saying that we cannot give the extension.
One of the things that, and I'll make a comment or two. Anybody remember last year? Remember how the banks wanted to lend money because they didn't know if the building would still be standing later that year? Remember COVID? Remember what we had to go through? Okay, so I understand they didn't file that. I understand they didn't file that. But we had a lot going on in this country right then. And it's finally getting better. And I can understand they, they lost one banker because the guy left and they have, this stuff doesn't, you're talking millions of dollars. This doesn't happen overnight. Takes a while to put that all back together. And it sounds like you've put it all back together, even to the point that I'm sure you're still going to put green, metal roofs on the buildings that, that Eric said you, you guys would do that and put grass on the front of it. Okay? Remember those two things. It'll be in the conditions. Okay, anybody else got any input on this? Anything else from you folks that are remote? Anything else you want to talk about? Hearing none? I'd, I'd encourage us for a motion and a second.
A motion to approve. This is Eric Disman.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Bun Ghee.
Bun Ghee, yes.
Finally got it right. Okay, for the second. If that's the case, I wouldn't, I would like you to call the role or call for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with Vicki Good. Vicki?
No.
Ellen?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Lee?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Ken? Oh, Ken has recused himself. Sorry. John?
Yes.
I.
The tie.
Still got me yet.
Oh, sorry. Al?
Yes.
Yay. I'm sorry. Who passes, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. It's passed. And it'll go on to the council and on March fourth, I'm sure some of you will show up for that again. I know these guys won't front of me. Okay, but anyway. That is done. And at this point, we will excuse you gentlemen and thank you for coming back. And at this point, we'll move to reports. Sally, do you have anything on reports?
Yes, sir. I'd like to start with the comprehensive plan and let everyone know that we did start our kickoff with Logan Simpson, the consultant on January nineteenth, and we've been having weekly meetings. And just yesterday, the site was launched and kicked off. We've also established stakeholders in the community that the consultants are interviewing and setting up times with individuals throughout the community to interview. They have received about a dozen existing plans from our transportation plans to the wildfire mitigation plans, utility plans, as well as the zoning maps and the vacant lot survey that A Burgess has been putting together. So they have a ton of materials to be reviewing. And we have established a community engagement plan that I will distribute to the planning commissioners. So you'll see all the various ways in which people can be engaged and provide input. And the next step is to establish the eight subcommittees. And these subcommittees will be working on the various chapter action items and review, and I hope to have at least one planning commissioner per subcommittee. So we will send out a a survey to you and ask you which of the subcommittees you would prefer to serve on as your first choice, second choice and third choice. And then the chairman and staff will get together and will make those assignments. Those subcommittee meetings will begin at the end of March. There'll be four subcommittee meetings. Eat one per month on the last Monday of each month. Then there is also going to be a town hall meeting where we will invite the community in, and that will be on April fourteenth, the day before tax day. So April fourteenth is a Wednesday evening and that will be both in person and virtual. So a lot is going on with the comprehensive plan update and the code review. So we, I will keep you apprised and be feeding you information throughout the next month to keep you apprised of all the activities going on. Any questions about us processing or proceeding with the comp plan? Okay, seeing none. Then the only other report I have is that March eleventh, there will be a planning commission meeting. We do have two hearings. First will be a final plat for the Brecken Heights project down near Morning Sun and Highway twenty four. And the second one is an extension of a preliminary plat, the Haven preliminary plat. And this is being requested before it expires in April. So that's it.
Okay, you had one other thing, and I don't know whether we do it under work session or just do it under reports about item A on the work session.
I can move right to that if you'd like.
Yes.
So this is the campgrounds and the recreation vehicle parks. The hundred and eighty day occupancy limitation, as you all know, was pulled out of the ordinance and a moratorium was established, an emergency moratorium for ninety days. That moratorium will be expiring on March third. However, city council will be enacting a new moratorium via an ordinance, starting on March fourth with the first reading. And in speaking with Mayor Pro Tem Hillary Labarre, she would like to see one year. If a decision is made prior to that year, then we will void the moratorium, depending upon how quickly this moves forward. The owners of the existing campgrounds are, we have been in contact with and we will be setting up a joint work session with city council as soon as possible in order for the property owners, the planning commission and the city council to be able to discuss this issue. I have prepared a memo which lays out the issue, including the definitions. It identifies the product, problem. It reviews the existing land uses and how these proposed definitions apply, what the housing laws are, a little bit about the housing crisis that we have. And then the memo includes three different options that council, planning commission can consider. There may be other options as well, but this gives you at least a starting point to contemplate the pros and the cons or advantages and disadvantages of the various options. So tonight, I just wanted to make you aware that I've been in contact with the property owners at the campground and RV park as well as Mayor Pro Tem Hillary Labarre in laying out a process to be able to study the issue and have a mindful path forward with a work session and then be able to potentially draft a new amendment to the zoning regulations and go to implementation from there. So tonight, I wasn't planning on discussing this topic other than to let you know that we will be sending you this memo very shortly. And our city attorney, Nina Williams, is also preparing a confidential legal memo for you to be able to have as well. Thank you.
Okay, at that point, at this point, we've really completed everything and we'd be looking at adjourning the regular meeting unless anybody else has anything else they would like to talk about.
This is Vicki Good. And I've got, wanted to make sure that going forward, since we have two new people, possibly maybe three new people on the commission, I would like to make sure that next to any of the issues coming up as to whether it is a quasi judicial, it needs to be stated on there, whether it is or is not. I assume that the public hearing, item number A, was quasi judicial, but I'd like to make sure that that was on there going forward.
It said it on the agenda. On the bottom of the last item, the last line. Q J.
Okay, sorry, I did, I missed that.
Okay. Anyway, I just spell it out be easier instead of trying to figure out all these different acronyms for this stuff. Okay, thank you all. Last year was a tough year. Hopefully, this won't be quite as tough as what we all went through and we can get back to having meetings. I know we got new cameras in this room that we finally figured out and they are so much better than Sally bringing in her little camera off of the screen somewhere and we use that to shoot the people at the podium. This is really an improvement. It looks good, Rob. Looks, looks good for doing that. Okay? Looking for a motion to adjourn? Face appeared. Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Yeah.